Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting on the Commission on the Status of Women for the City of Glendale. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Burns.
Present.
Commissioner Hoojaya. Commissioner Magron.
Present.
Commissioner Perian.
Present.
Commissioner Sumergen.
Present.
Ex officio Petrosian.
Present.
Ex officio Rush.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Hyropetian. Next item, please.
Sure. Item 1A, Report Regarding the Posting of the Agenda. The agenda for the August 21st, 2017 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall on Friday, August 18th, 2017. Item 2, Introductions and Presentations. Introduction of New Commissioner Elena Sumergen.
Good afternoon, Chair Perian, members of the Commission. So Commissioner Sumergen is our newest Commissioner on the Commission on the Status of Women, and we just wanted to take this opportunity to welcome her. She did replace Commissioner Lambalot, who was serving as the Chair currently for the Commission, and so Vice Chair Perian is now serving as the Chair for this meeting. Thank you. So if Commissioner Sumergen wants to introduce herself, we'd be more than happy to hear.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Elena Sumergen, and it is my great honor to join you on the Glendale City Commission on the Status of Women. I would like to express my deepest gratitude to Councilman Reza Agajanian for his appointment and to the Glendale City Council for approving my nomination. Some Glendale residents at home may recognize me as former Field Representative for Assemblyman Mike Gatto or current NASA JPL Solar System Ambassador. I'm very excited to continue my love of public service as an asset to my fellow Commissioners and to the residents of our extraordinary community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that introduction, and I'd like to personally welcome you to the Commission. Commissioners, anybody else have any comments?
Welcome to our team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Item B, Recognition of Outgoing Commissioner Diane Lambalot.
Diane, would you please step forward to the podium, please?
Sure. Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
And Chair Perian.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How about you?
Doing great, thank you.
Good.
We just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your service and let the Commissioners give any parting words and present you with a plaque on behalf of the City of Glendale thanking you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I walk down, so I can be well heard, I just want to thank you, Diane, personally for your leadership and your passion on the Commission and your guidance, and I personally have learned a lot and a great deal from you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So while she's walking down, I just want to appreciate it again. Thank you. I have been here for less than a year, and I appreciate your service in our community, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. And my name is spelled right. Thank you, Army.
Thank you.
And best of luck to you all, and especially to you young ladies off to college. Have you started yet?
No, we start in September, September 23rd or 24th.
Eight. Oh, yeah. Yeah, sooner than I thought. All right, great. Thank you. And thank you very much to Ms. Powers and to everybody on the staff level who helped with the Commission. You're terrific. Thank you. Great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. May we have the next item, please?
Sure. Item C, Presentation. Tara Peterson, Executive Director of Glendale YWCA, and Detective Ryan Young, Glendale Police Department.
So... No, I was going to welcome Tara Peterson to the podium.
Sure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here. It's an honor to be here. I've just completed my one-year anniversary at the YWCA Glendale, hence the gray hair. But nonetheless, I feel really honored and privileged to be a part of an organization that's been in the community for a very long time, providing much-needed services to families in the City of Glendale. So the one thing I want to just really make sure that people are aware of is that the YWCA Glendale is committed to serving the needs of all victims of domestic violence, regardless of their gender. So we also, we do serve men as well as women, and regardless of folks' sexual orientation, physical disability, and citizenship, or ethnicity, or language. So I want that to be really clear, because oftentimes when people hear the YWCA, they think all we serve is women and children, but we serve all victims of domestic violence. And so just to share a little bit about our programs, we have a 24-hour crisis line. So it is staffed 24 hours, 7 days a week, and we serve the entire Los Angeles County on that hotline, and where we offer emotional support, resources. We also provide opportunity for folks who are fleeing domestic violence, meaning that they're in immediate danger, to be able to access our emergency shelter. Our Sunrise Village Emergency Shelter, it's a 45-day shelter, and that is specific for women and children. However, we do provide motel vouchers for men that need help escaping a domestic violence situation. Our 45-day shelter, we're actually keeping women and children almost up to 160 days. Unfortunately, there is a lack of transitional housing throughout Los Angeles County. A lack of affordable housing makes it really difficult for us to move women from our shelter within 45 days to a more permanent housing, or transitional housing. And so that's something that we are really trying to work hard on. Part of staying at the emergency shelter, they also have access to food, clothing. We provide counseling to children. We provide parenting support, case management services, and advocacy. At our Domestic Violence Center on Lexington, we provide legal assistance, so we help people with restraining orders. We help with the dissolution of marriage if needed. We also help with undocumented survivors attaining their U visas. Lastly, one of the most critical pieces is the work we do around prevention and education. We really do believe that domestic violence is preventable, and so we work really hard to raise awareness about domestic violence, the impact that it has on children who witness domestic violence, and ways in which we can stop domestic violence. And so we provide presentations throughout the community with the Glendale Unified School District and other community members, raising awareness about domestic violence and promoting healthy relationships. Just really quickly on our services this last fiscal year, we served over 2,900 people through our domestic violence program. We received over 980 calls to our crisis hotline. We served 525 clients at our Domestic Violence Service Center on Lexington, in which we provided over 2,000 individual counseling sessions and over 1,800 group sessions. We also provided 46 clients with legal assistance, and we safely housed 173 women and children at our Sunrise Village Emergency Shelter. Lastly, we were able to reach 718 people through our education and outreach and educating people around prevention. So in total, we provided, when it comes to bed nights, we were able to provide over 2,800 nights of shelter for 173 women in here in the City of Glendale. That's my presentation about what we've been up to. Yes?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but are the women and children safe in Glendale, or do you take them someplace else and bring domestic violence survivors back to Glendale?
So about 68% of the women that we serve in our shelter are from the Glendale Burbank area, about 68%. And so we do serve women from the City of Glendale. We also serve outside. If it's not safe for them to be in Glendale because of their perpetrator, then we would do a safety transfer to another location. But we assess that on a one-on-one case. So it's not automatic.
I have a question. Just curious, currently at this moment, how many women, children, or men are you harboring?
So our emergency shelter, we are able to house 10 women and children, which is not a lot. We did, there's a couple things that we're really excited about. We recently received an ESG grant from the City of Glendale, which is allowing us to hire a housing and homeless prevention specialist who's going to be working with our clients immediately, as soon as they come into transitional housing, to help them transition faster. So we're trying to really reduce that. So that's one thing. And then the other thing, we're hoping to increase our bed, number of beds. So I believe because of our facility, we weren't able to pass fire code previously, and so we're revisiting that so we can increase our beds. So we have technically 17 beds, but we're just not up to code to be able to house 17 women and children at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
So I do have a question about the mental health and the counseling piece you just mentioned that you do offer, right? Therapist sessions. So is it per individual, or is it group sessions? Because we do provide counseling sessions throughout the school district as well. I just want to make sure that we're not double-dipping, and when we are providing counseling services, we always say that it's ethical for a kid to receive one, you know, services from one person rather than multiple. So how can we probably coordinate that?
Yes, so all of our, so our therapeutic services for our therapy, so there's peer counseling, which is basically emotional support, but then there's the therapy that we offer, which is similar, I'm assuming, to what you all do in the school district. We have that same situation with Door of Hope, and so when we have a client that comes in and is receiving therapy from us, when they go over to Door of Hope, then we no longer provide them with the therapy because of that ethical concern. And so if you have a student that you know may be receiving therapy from YWCA Glendale, then we would no longer provide that therapy, but we will provide all the other services, such as support group. They can also still come to our children's program if their mom is receiving service or the parent is receiving service. They can also participate in all the children activities as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
I actually have a comment. I attended the 20th Annual Legacy Luncheon earlier this year. I remember meeting you in person.
Yes, and congratulations on your scholarship.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say that I remember hearing your story, and it was incredibly moving. And I just want to thank you for your personal strength in what you do, and thank you for all the differences you've made in this community and others.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Are you going to be discussing the candlelight vigil, et cetera?
At the, when it's on that item, right? I'll be here to answer questions?
Yes, that's later on in the agenda, and Ms. Peterson will stick around for that item.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next item, please.
And then we'd like to invite Detective Brian Young from the Glendale Police Department to provide us the law enforcement perspective of what we're doing here in the City of Glendale to address domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Perian, Commissioners and staff. My name is Brian Young. I'm a detective with the Glendale Police Department. I've been a, excuse me, I've been a police officer for about 10 years and a detective for a little over a year and a half. I'm currently assigned to the Assaults Detail Glendale. We have five detectives that work there and a sergeant. We handle everything from your simple assaults and batteries to your felonious assaults, stalking, criminal threats, annoying phone calls. We also handle crimes against children, sex crimes, child abuse, as well as sex crimes with adults, and of course, domestic violence. So we have a wide variety of tasks. The slides up here, this is just for the past two and a half years, these are our total assault-related reports, and then the breakdown of the domestic violence related within those. So you can see going back over the last two and a half years, approximately half of our total assaults, a little less than half, are domestic violence-related. This doesn't necessarily mean that an arrest was made, just that a report was taken for an assault. Go to the next slide, please. And this is just a breakdown for the first six months of every year, from 2013 to current. You can see we're down a little bit this year in total, and this is just domestic violence-related reports. We're down a little bit this year so far, but it's not the full year. It usually comes about, rounds out to about, you know, the same every year. Next slide. And this is the same slide as before, just a different graph, a bar graph here to get a better illustration of what I was talking about. We work very closely with the victims in domestic violence. Part of that is a collaboration with the YWCA. We work with them quite often. We also work with the LA County's Victim Assistance Program. They have similar function with the YWCA in that they can assist us with housing for the victims. They assist us with relocation for victims, and also they work with the victims throughout the court process if it comes to that. We also have the Emergency Fund, which is great. It's a fund that was put in place. If, for whatever reason, we're not able to access the YWCA's beds or even the District Attorney's Victim Assistance Program, we can turn to the Emergency Fund, and if we need, say it was on a Friday, an incident happened, and we needed to find shelter for a victim, we can use the Emergency Fund to put a victim in a motel or a hotel over the weekend until the following work week, where we can find a more permanent housing solution for them. And that's something that you guys have, you know, given to us, and we appreciate that. To give you guys, you know, a little idea of how a domestic violence situation in Glendale would work, a call can come in from, you know, a bystander that sees maybe a neighbor, sees or hears a domestic violence. It can come in from the victim, and we also get calls from the suspects as well. Patrol will go out and respond, and it's their duty to separate all the involved parties and determine if a crime has occurred. If a crime has not occurred, it's our policy at Glendale that a report will still be taken. Those reports come to us in the Detective Bureau, the Assaults Division, and we go through every report and we contact every victim, regardless if there's a crime or not. We contact those victims to see, one, sometimes when, you can imagine the heat of the moment, the victim's a little flustered, and maybe they don't get all the information out that they want to. So we contact them a few days later and follow up to see if maybe there's something else that they didn't say the first time and see if there was a crime. If there's still not a crime, but maybe there's some resources that we can offer them, we'll do that as well. And then ultimately, we'll either close a case out if there's absolutely no crime, or if there's any, you know, indication that maybe there was a crime, then we'll bring that case to the District Attorney's Office and let them decide. The same scenario, if the officers go out there and they determine that a crime did occur and there's a suspect on scene and arrest will be made, we'll get a protective order for the victim, and that case will also come to us in the Detective Bureau, and we'll typically file those cases, and then work with the victim through the initial investigation phase and then through the court phase as well, making sure they get all the resources that they need. You know, for us, domestic violence is difficult because from the police side of it, it's a very reactive crime. And what I mean by that is, you know, for burglaries and robberies, it's very easy as a police to say, okay, we can go saturate an area where we know there's, you know, a high probability of burglaries. We can improve lighting conditions and really, you know, try to prevent a burglary from happening. But for domestic violence, it's a little bit more difficult. A lot of these incidents happen behind closed doors, and, you know, it's up to us to get, you know, in the YWCA, to get awareness out there and to make people really aware of domestic violence. So we do that a few ways. One, we talk with patrol officers on a pretty routine basis, putting lineup training on for them, letting them know some of the new, you know, trends in domestic violence and what we can do as officers to help victims of domestic violence. We also work with the YWCA a lot. They have for their advocates, I think it's a week-long training block? 40-hour training block. We'll typically go there for one of the blocks and, you know, do the police side of it and kind of give them our input of what we're looking for, and then take some feedback as well, you know, what we can improve on. You know, we like to refer as many victims as we can to the YWCA, obviously, but also, you know, it goes both ways. Sometimes victims go bypass us as a police, and they go directly to the YWCA. And they've been really good with, you know, with us if they have a victim that's a little hesitant to report a crime, to work with them and work with us, and maybe we can get, you know, get a report made and do some, you know, follow-up investigation. You know, one of the things we really pride ourselves on, particularly our detail, is we follow up with every victim of every report that's made, and we do that to prevent anyone from slipping through the cracks. We all know how serious of an issue this is, so we take it very seriously, and we take our job very seriously. That's all I have for everyone. Any questions?
I have, oh, sorry. Okay, thank you so much. I have a question. So you said that the, that the domestic violence incident reports are usually around the same every single year, but that, that doesn't necessarily mean that a crime has been committed, that there's just a report. So do you think that crime, in your professional opinion, that it's going up or that it's staying stagnant as with the incidents?
With domestic violence specifically?
Yeah.
It's tough to say. I think it, domestic violence, crime overall, I'd say, is probably going up a little bit, just based on different laws. Domestic violence, I think it really does fluctuate. I think we're seeing sometimes an increase in reporting, just on, you know, the proactive approach we're taking to awareness and stuff, especially, you know, some of the more, you know, national attention that's been paid to domestic violence. There's more of a public awareness of it, so I think people are more apt to call the police if they hear something, whereas before they might have just said, oh, it's just neighbors fighting. Now they'll call us, at least to get us out there to investigate. So it's really hard to say. I think it does fluctuate from year to year and just kind of depending on how, you know, the awareness is.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for continuing to use the Emergency Fund. I'm glad to hear that, you know, you're still finding that useful. I know it was set up before I was appointed to the Commission, so I'm sure ex-Commissioners, Paula Devine, one of them, will be glad to hear that you continue to use the Emergency Fund. I would like to, I am just curious as to how often do you end up using that?
Yeah, not, not too often. We haven't used it in over a year. We really keep it for, like, really a reserve. We don't want to just abuse it. It's something that we were fortunate to have, so we haven't used it in the last year. It's something that we really will use as a last resort if we've tapped out all our other resources, and that's something that we turn to. So I think a little over a year ago, we did use it for a situation that was much like the one I described before, where we just couldn't get any other resource, and it was great. It worked out perfectly for us, but we haven't used it just because we kind of want to keep it in our, you know, back pocket. Sure.
How much money's left?
I believe we have a little over $2,000.
So you don't need any for a while.
Well, I didn't say that.
You'll let us know.
I will. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commissioners?
I see that there was an uptick in 2016, except for going up and going down. Are there any other patterns that have emerged in long-term studies on domestic violence that we can address in prevention?
To be quite honest, I don't know. I, you know, I saw that number before when I was putting the presentation together, and I was trying to kind of think of reasons why it spiked a little bit that year, and I'm not entirely, to be honest, I'm not entirely sure. The one thing that came to me, like I said before, is just public awareness is definitely on the rise, which is a good thing. So, you know, it's funny, public awareness is going up and our reports are going up. You think that's, you know, usually when crime reports go up, it's a bad thing, but in this case, I think it's kind of good because it's telling us that people are calling more often, and we're getting that, you know, out there. As far as other, you know, reasons why, I'm not really sure, but I can look into that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was going to ask, and maybe it's a little bit overlap of Commissioner Sumergen's inquiry, but do you have this data broken down by the types of assaults?
No, I don't. We can, I'm sure we do somewhere. It wasn't given to me, but I'm sure our crime staff people can do that.
Does the Commission, well, it's fine. This is fine.
Yeah. If you want, I'm more than happy to follow up with that.
Okay. I'm always interested in drilling down into the data.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to see, you know, variations year to year. Let's say if murder is going up and rape is going down. So I'm always curious with that.
Absolutely. I'm more than happy to get that for you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, certainly. I second that. I would really like to see the details and see exactly what's going on where and why and how.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for very informative reports.
Staff will work with the Police Department to get that information to the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda?
Item 3, Oral Comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report.
We have, we have no speakers?
No.
Okay. So, next item?
Item 4, Consent Items. A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Commission Meeting Held on May 8, 2017.
Chair Perian, members of the Commission, due to attendance and reorganization of the Commission, we probably don't have the ability to approve the minutes from the last meeting, seeing as to there was one Commissioner present who was present at that meeting. So staff would recommend a motion to note and file the minutes instead.
May I please have a motion?
That's okay. You're looking for a motion to note and file the minutes of May?
I move the, to note and file the minutes of May the 8th, is it?
Yes.
2017.
And I'll second.
Okay, so may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magron?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumergen?
And Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next item, please?
Next item, Item 5, Business Agenda. A, Action Items. And Item 1 under A, Selection of Commission Officers. And Item 1A, Motion to Select Chair for the Term of August 2017 to 2018, of August. And then B, we have Motion to Select Vice Chair for the Term of August 2017 to August 2018.
Ms. Powers, could you please go over the process for selection?
Absolutely. So with the departure of Diane Lambalot from the Commission, as we mentioned recently, who was serving a term as Chair until November 2017, the Commission has the option of appointing a Chair today to serve a term through August 2018. Should the Commission choose to move forward with this selection process today, that term would run from August to August, as is mentioned in the motion, and the Chair would open up the floor to nominations for position of the Chair. Once all nominations are received from Commissioners, the Chair will close the floor to nominations. There is no second required for a nomination. And in order to be selected as Chair, a minimum of three affirmative votes is required. And once the Chair is selected, we would move on to Vice Chair, and the recommendation would be just to keep the Vice Chair position consistent with the Chair position, too.
So do I, do we just make a motion? Is that?
It's, at this point, it's, it's open for nominations for Chair.
I would nominate Linda Burns to be the Chair.
You're looking for any other nominations at this point? Any other nominations? Okay, so we'll close the nominations and we'll do roll call for the vote.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magron?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumergen?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Okay, and at this point, congratulations.
Thank you. May I nominate now?
Certainly. At this point, it's open for Vice Chair.
I will nominate Eileen Magron for Vice Chair.
Any other nominations? Nope. So we'll close nominations and we'll move on to roll call.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magron?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumergen?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. At this time, it's up to the Commission. We can keep our seats or we can change seats. We could take a quick decision.
I'm okay with keeping the seat now.
Okay. All right.
Are you okay with that?
And at this point, the meeting will be turned over to Chair Burns, as far as running the meeting. So should we read Item 2 into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 2, Domestic Violence Awareness Month Activities. A, Motion Approving Request to Glendale City Council for Proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At B, Motion Approving Partnership with the YWCA of Glendale for the annual Candlelight Vigil.
Staff would be happy to provide a brief report at this time, if the Commission would
A, motion approving request to Glendale City Council for proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At B, motion approving partnership with the YWCA of Glendale for the annual candlelight vigil.
Staff would be happy to provide a brief report at this time, if the commission would like to hear a report on this item.
I think it would be nice to have Tara come up and go over the two things that she wants to talk about. Is that the time and place now?
Chair Burns, one of the items is for the commission that was presented by staff, which is the proclamation. It would be jointly with the YWCA, but we can go over that now, and then we can invite Ms. Peterson up for the candlelight vigil, or if there's no questions about the proclamation, Ms. Peterson can come up and talk to us about the candlelight vigil.
I think that we have had the proclamation more than one year. Are there any questions about that?
Is the commission okay with receiving it jointly with the YWCA?
I think the commission would have to answer that.
I think because some of us are new, it would be nice to hear briefly about it, if staff are okay with that.
Absolutely. So in an effort to bring awareness to domestic violence, which affects women of all ethnicities, ages, and socioeconomic status, the commission has two activities to consider for the month of October, which is nationally recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So the first would be requesting a proclamation from the mayor and city council to designate October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is something that's done annually. The president typically does a proclamation, the state does a proclamation, and so the city of Glendale has followed suit as well. The proclamation could be presented to the commission at a city council meeting on Tuesday, September 26. This would provide advance notice about October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and also provide the commission the opportunity to promote the candlelight vigil, should the commission participate in that. And the commission can receive it solely as the CSW, or can partner with the YWCA to receive it jointly. And then the other activity for the commission's consideration, which is item B in your agenda, would be partnering with the YWCA to do the candlelight vigil. The YWCA pretty much puts together the bulk of, you know, the survivors and the artistic presenters who come, whether it's singing or playing an instrument, and they host it at their facility. The commission's role in the candlelight vigil is typically helping secure speakers on behalf of the city, such as a representative from the commission, representative from city council, the police department, and anyone else that, you know, we see fit to have representing the city at this event. And also provide in-kind services from our graphics division to help put together the, any promotional materials, as well as the program. That doesn't come at a cost to the commission. That's absorbed by the management services department of the city of Glendale, because graphics is housed in management services. So at this time, if, oh, and the date, I'm sorry, the date of the event, as suggested by the YWCA, is Thursday, October 5th in the evening. At this point, I'll invite Ms. Peterson up to answer any other questions or add anything that staff may have forgotten. Thanks.
Thank you. I think everything was covered. You know, one of the things that's really important to the YWCA of Glendale is to make sure that we're partnering with other organizations and with the city of Glendale. And so it is just an opportunity for us to really show that the city of Glendale is in support of honoring domestic violence and recognizing domestic violence awareness month. It just, to me, it just adds another layer of credibility about, around, and the importance of the work, and so we're really hoping that you all would consider partnering with us again this year.
I would also hope that all of us would attend. Last, wasn't it, take your breath away, last year, wasn't it?
Great, yeah, it's my first one, my first time coordinating it, so it was really--
It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and all the commissioners should try and be there, and the students also.
This year, we're, one of the things we're planning to add this year, we were, unfortunately, unfortunately, there was a, an actual domestic violence murder that happened in October. It wasn't in the city of Glendale, it was in North Hollywood, which is right, really close, and we receive a lot of clients from the North Hollywood. There's no domestic violence shelter in that area, so a lot of folks come to the YWCA of Glendale, and this young woman, barely 21, was murdered by her boyfriend, and her family started a GoFundMe account, and they donated all the proceeds to the YWCA of Glendale. And so their family is going to be a part of this event, so we're going to be remembering all the, all victims of domestic violence, including Meredith, her name is Meredith, I want to say her name, but also it's an opportunity to celebrate the voices of survivors and all the people that support survivors of domestic violence.
And it starts at what time?
I'm not sure we've figured out a time yet.
Six o'clock?
Six-ish, yeah, six-thirty-ish, yes, and then--
You do provide some nice food.
Yes, we're fortunate enough to get donation from Porto's Bakery, and Whole Foods also donates drinks, and so it's a, and we have it right in our regency room, which is a very beautiful room, and so it's a, it's a great location, and it's, it's a really, really good event. It's a great way to kick off Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I'm going to remind Eileen, do you remember the picture?
Yes. In fact, I want to appreciate everything that you do. I do work within my position in the Glendale Unified School District with homeless foster and domestic violence families, so I know what it takes to do what you do. I appreciate you, and I did attend the event, I think it was one of the first events that I attended last year, and it was very touching to hear people coming up and talking about their stories and what they've gone. It's very informative, so I urge everybody to participate.
Thank you so much for your support.
Any other questions?
Do you want a motion?
Yes, Chair Burns, it would be nice if commission wants to participate in both activities, we can do one motion for both.
I think alternative one?
Yes.
That would be the correct one, two?
So it'd be a motion to request proclamation from the city of, Glendale City Council for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and approve a partnership with the YWCA of Glendale for, to participate and host the annual candlelight vigil with them.
Yeah, yeah, I'll move that.
I'll second. Do we need moving second?
Well, we typically don't have the chair seconding motions, so you might want to ask for a different second.
Would you please second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you, and if there's consensus, we can just note that there's unanimous consensus, or we can do roll call, Chair Burns, whichever you'd prefer.
Roll call, please.
Okay.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magron?
Yes.
Commissioner Subergin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The next item?
Next item, item three, consideration of partnership with the YWCA of Glendale to host a Women's Empowerment Brunch. Item A, motion approving partnership with the YWCA of Glendale.
Chair Burns, members of the commission, this came up very recently in conversations with Ms. Peterson, she's not going to go very far right now. The Glendale YWCA has expressed interest in partnering with the commission in the month of November to host a Women's Empowerment Brunch to raise funds for their Economic Empowerment Initiative, and that raises awareness about financial abuse and provides resources and tools to survivors of domestic violence. So this would be a brunch that would charge members of the community to come to, attend. It would include a panel discussion, networking opportunities, and food, and the money, the funds would go towards helping victims in that way at the Glendale YWCA. And the YWCA is hoping to hold this event at a city facility, so that's what the commission partnership would entail, is an in-kind sponsorship to provide them with a venue for the space. Some of the spaces they are considering is Downtown Central Library, Brand Library, there's other facilities that can be considered. The facility doesn't have to be determined today, just the partnership. Staff has looked into the potential availability for the three dates that the YWCA has noted, November 14, 15, 16, and both of those facilities are available on those dates. And so that, it's a little ways away, so that determination can be made based on the number of people anticipated and kind of what everybody thinks. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, and Ms. Peterson is here to fill in the blanks.
Great, thank you. So one of the things that we do also during October is what's called the Purple Purse Campaign. It's a national campaign with the Allstate Foundation, and the purpose of the, of the campaign is to raise awareness about financial abuse. Financial abuse happens in domestic, when we talk about domestic violence, we're not just talking about physical domestic violence, we're talking about other forms of abuse, emotional abuse, financial abuse, and that can happen in ways of women, of the victim being withheld money, not given access to money, or wanting to leave and don't have the resources to leave. And so a lot of what we do when we're working with the victims that come to our center is we do a lot of stuff on financial literacy, to help them understand how to balance a checkbook, so that they can become more self-sufficient. Another component of the YWCA USA, which we're under that, is women's empowerment. And so we felt that this would be a great time, a great opportunity to kind of leverage women that are high-profile women in our community, that are from technology, that are from banking, that are from just all these different areas, to bring them to a brunch where they can really talk about their journey and being a leader in this community and being a very successful woman, and their experiences, and share that with entire community. And the benefit of that would be that the money would go to us to actually continue our programming to help the women that are receiving services through our financial literacy workshop. And so I felt like it would be a great partnership, again, in lines with your mission and our mission, to kind of bring it together, to really elevate, elevate and support the work that we're doing.
Questions?
Are there any questions about this branch?
I think it is, it's a great idea. Raising awareness is always, and again, domestic violence is not just physical abuse. I totally respect and get that, but we talked about, discussed about dates, November 14th, 15th, you said, and 16th. I just want to make sure that we have enough time to advertise, get out there, but isn't that closer to the holidays, Thanksgiving? Can we do a week, like the first week of November, maybe? I don't know, it was just, just something that I just thought about.
I think we're, I mean, we're, I think we're flexible. I think we can definitely look at the first week of November. We want it, so part of the way this is working is the registration happens through this Purple Purse Campaign, and so that ends at the end of October, so any time after October would be good. So the first week would be fine as well, because usually people wait until last, like a week before to register anyway, so that would definitely work for us. We could definitely consider the first week of November.
As long as we're getting the audience and we have people attending, it doesn't matter to me, but I don't know.
We're really, we have a very active fundraising committee with our board, who's really taking this on, and we really think that the women that we're inviting or looking to invite are women that we know are going to bring in also people as well, so we're trying to be strategic, because we want to, we want it to be a very good event, but we also want it to be beneficial as well, and be able to have as many people attend as possible, so I definitely think we can do that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we could take a motion from a member of the commission?
I can't do that.
No, you cannot do that.
It's number three.
Motion, do you move this?
Okay, so that would be a motion approving partnering with the Glendale YWCA to host the Women's Empowerment Brunch in November.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magron?
Yes.
Commissioner Subergin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Item four, appointment of selection committee for the 2017 to 2018 student ex officio members. Item A, motion appointing two commissioners and one student ex officio to the selection committee.
Chair Burns, would you like a report on this item?
A brief one would be fine. I have already served a couple of times, so I would hope that some of the other commissioners would really want to do this.
Certainly. So the commission by resolution has established two student ex officio positions that serve one-year non-voting positions, and annually, the commission appoints members to serve on the student ex officio screening and selection committee, which screens and selects the incoming student ex officio commissioners, as our current ex officio commissioners are preparing to end their year and go off to school. And it's been coordinated so that the year for the student ex officio starts in fall and goes through the summer, as to not conflict with some of them going away to school. So at this point, the commission may appoint two commissioners, along with one student ex officio member, current ex officio member, to essentially go through the applications that the commission receives, interview the students, and then confer and select the incoming student ex officios. And because the commission meets quarterly, it, as of last year, we ask that the commission grants the authority to the selection committee to just select them, and then they come to the next meeting, rather than bringing back the item for the commission to approve, and then them coming at the following meeting. Applicants must be a junior in high school or above, and that includes higher education, and either live in Glendale or go to school in the area served by the Glendale Unified School District. And I say that because there's the unincorporated Locust Center section, that's technically not the city of Glendale, but that portion of Locust Center is served by the Glendale Unified School District, so that's included, so that students who attend Glendale schools can apply for that. And packets of the submissions will be prepared and distributed to the committee for review. We will, staff will work with the committee members to select an afternoon, typically an afternoon works for students to come in and go through all the interviews back to back to back, and then, as mentioned, go through and determine which students will be selected. Staff will get the word out to all the local schools that are eligible, and also to our local nonprofits and any service organizations to get the word out. A press release will be prepared, applications will be available on the commission's webpage on the city website, and it'll also go out in the monthly electronic newsletter, and also be out there via social media, and hopefully the schools will promote, you know, for their students, too, via their counselors or however they normally promote that. And when this report was prepared for last week's meeting, it was anticipated that the application period would be open from August 15 through September 29. That gives students almost seven weeks to prepare and submit their applications. That deadline can be extended. I would look to the student ex officios to comment on whether that window is sufficient or that a deadline should be extended. That concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Oh, may I speak? I think that is sufficient. I think that, you said about seven weeks?
It was previously seven weeks, so at this point, it'll be almost six weeks.
I think that that is perfectly fine. When I did my application, it took me about a month to do it, so six weeks is being extremely generous. And then, may I, may I comment further? Chair, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, Chair Burns. I would, sorry, pardon my boldness, but I would be honored to serve on the selection committee. I remember when, oh my God, I remember when I was on that committee, and I was so nervous and I was so afraid, and you were so kind to me, and everyone who interviewed me was so sweet, and I would love to see another student come here and just have the same amazing experience that I've had this past year. It's been amazing.
We have one, one volunteer.
Yeah.
Therefore, we need two more commission volunteers.
And just to clarify for perhaps a New York commissioner, we ask for two commissioners, not more than two voting commissioners, so that the meeting doesn't have to be a notice-brown-acted public meeting, that would then have to be televised, and I'm sure interviewing is stressful enough, so, without it being televised live on TV, so.
Ms. Powers, I'd like to volunteer as well.
I'll volunteer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just before I move on, I just want to confirm with Ex officio Rush, are you leaving the state to go to school, or are you going to be fairly local to come back for interviews?
I'll be fairly local. I'm going to UCLA in the fall, so, yeah, I'm very excited, so 45-minute drive.
Okay. Thank you. I would like a motion, please. Staff would like a motion if possible.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. So the motion would be to have Commissioners Perian and Subergin and Ex officio Rush serve on the selection committee. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Magron?
Yes.
Commissioner Subergin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perian?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So staff will work on getting letters out to the school, as well as the application this week, and posting it online, and getting the press release out as soon as possible so that students have as much time as possible to apply. Thank you.
Next item, item B, reports, information only. Item B1, update on the commission on the status of women's legislative agenda.
Do you have a report, Ms. Powers?
I have a very brief report. Chair Burns, members of the commission, at the last meeting, the commission approved support for four bills that were added to the list of bills supported by the commission on the status of women that go to city council as advisory for city council to consider supporting. The matrix in the report, in the report includes that list, as well as the current status of each bill. Now, legislature's been out for summer session, and they just reconvened today. The only bill on this list that was scheduled to be heard today was Senate Bill 169, and that had to do with sex equity in higher education schools. That hasn't been updated yet, as far as what the status is, if it was heard today indeed, or if it was pushed to a later date. The governor, I'm sorry, the, the last day for any bill to be passed by both houses is September 15, and then after that, the governor has until October 15 to sign or veto any bills that passes from the legislature. And so at the November meeting, there will be a final outcome list of the status of these various bills. various bills. That concludes my very brief report. If there's any questions.
What is next?
Next is item two. Next is item two, update on Dress for Success Accessories Drive.
Yes, okay. So the commission, as you are all aware, organize an accessories drive for Dress for Success Worldwide West. Worldwide West is the Los Angeles branch of Dress for Success, and it does serve the LA, the Glendale area, as well as the greater Los Angeles area. So 140 accessories, good quality accessories, consisting of 17 handbags, 45 pairs of shoes, 45 pieces of jewelry, and 45 scarves were donated. Commissioner Perian and staff delivered the items in July down to their location, and met with staff from Dress for Success. And they were immensely appreciative of the CSW's efforts, and expressed their interest in partnering with the commission again in the future. They welcomed commissioners to contact them, should they be interested in donating their time for speaking and mentorship. They also do financial literacy programs at the Capital One Cafe over at the Americana for their clients, and they bring them out there. Capital One provides dinner for them, and they go through a financial literacy curriculum with them on a weekly basis. So they're familiar with Glendale, and they were very, very excited about the partnership. That concludes staff's report.
And may I add, Ms. Powers, I personally want to thank the staff for your support and your effort in coordinating this drive. I, I am aware of the logistics challenges to have this set up. And I'm really delighted that I was able to join you in delivering all of these accessories to the organization. It really is a very impressive organization. And I did take some pictures, and I think you're looking at the mannequins with the dresses and the, the overall facility itself. And I do look forward to partnering, and I encourage partnering with this organization in the future, not just for the drive itself, but for the mentoring opportunities that they have. And there's a table there with all of the other non-clothing drive, accessory drive-related support services that they offer.
So they offer job training, coaching, prepping for interviews, and then they give them interview clothing, and they also give them clothing, like a week's worth of clothing, depending on where they work, so that they have something to wear once they actually get the job, as well. And that's, this picture is their receiving room. So.
Great job.
Thank you.
And I just want to remind everybody that Dress for Success is being honored at the GYA luncheon, August 23. So that there will be, I don't know who's coming from Dress for Success, but they'll be honored August 23. If you wish to attend, you need to contact Tina Osborne. That's it, as far as I'm concerned about that. Very good. Want to do that again?
As I stated, I do look forward to partnering with them.
That's terrific.
Item six, commissioners, staff comments.
Where would we like to start?
I can start, yeah.
That would be fine.
Since this is my last meeting, as a student ex officio member, I would just like to thank all of you so much. I said it before, I'll say it again, this has been one of the most amazing experiences of my life. And all of you women are so inspiring to me, what you do for the community, what you do even just for this commission. And I can't wait. I'm, I'm so sad that I have to pick a new student ex officio, but I, I can't wait to help you guys, and just to, I hope you guys all continue to do amazing things, and I know you will. And I also want to, I'd like to thank staff, Ms. Powers, and everyone else. You were so kind to me when I came in, and you showed me the ropes. And I can't say thank you enough. This has been amazing.
Thank you.
That's wonderful, and congratulations. Much luck on your future endeavors. Thank you all for welcoming me here tonight. It's really been an honor to join you on my first day on the commission. I would like to add, the next time we will be meeting will be after Halloween. So for families looking for a humanitarian alternative to trick-or-treating this Halloween, you can try trick-or-treating for UNICEF. It benefits children who live in countries where poverty, war, and natural disasters make it difficult to get even the basic needs to survive. Trick-or-treat for UNICEF began 66 years ago as a way to help children still affected by World War II. Since then, millions of children across the United States have gone door-to-door on Halloween with UNICEF collection boxes, calling out Trick or Treat for UNICEF. The annual tradition has helped raise more than 175 million since 1950. The US Fund meets Charity Navigator's highest ratings. Out of every dollar spent, 90 cents goes towards helping children. You can visit by going to www.unicefusa.org/trick-or-treat to order your collection boxes, and to get more information about children in need around the world.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to give a very brief thank you to all of you for the amazing support. I've worked with you throughout my senior year, and hopefully, I get to stay in touch with many of you throughout college. It's nice to know that I have such amazing women on my side, and I hope to continue to learn more from you as I continue in my endeavors. So thank you.
Commissioner Perian, next.
I, I want to wish both of you all the best, and I'm sure you will do your best, and you'll just be stellar examples in our community. Good luck to you.
Come back and visit.
That would be me. Once again, I would just echo with my commissioners, we appreciate your support, and you being on this team. I remember interviewing you both, and, and the recommendations that I got from your assistant principals and associate, it is amazing, you know, as a high school student, how much you have accomplished. And I'm not sure where you're going, but yeah, UCLA. I'm a Bruin myself. So, yes. So, you are? Oh, perfect. See? We're promoting Bruins. But you're always welcome. You are always going to be part of our team. So please participate in our events, and just reach out to us if there is anything that we can do to support you, and, and continue coming to us. And, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. We just about wrapped up. I would like to go ahead and wrap up what's happened in the last three months. We celebrated Memorial Day, coffee and donuts. I represented the commission, Women's Commission, and I think we served a lot of donuts and coffee. And Ardi Kasakian and Scott Ochoa had a really, really lovely reception for all the commissioners. A nice idea, lovely food, just a nice idea for the commissioners to meet and mingle. Then we celebrated Father's Day. And I put a booklet out for the Korean Comfort Women. I hope you all got that. That was a couple of Fridays ago at the library. Phenomenal show. I couldn't believe these Korean ladies, gentlemen, children, the drum sets, it was unbelievable. Did you, you didn't see it?
I did not see it.
Oh, my goodness. I, I'm so sorry, we all didn't go. It was, wow. Then I'm going to skip to the GYA luncheon, August 23. The Dress for Success is going to be honored. And the prayer breakfast is coming up November the 9th, more to follow on that. Then I, the Women Achievers, I'm so sorry that Tara didn't stay a bit. I guess it would be the 25th year for the Women of Achievers. It's being held October 6 in Pasadena. And probably, a lot of the ladies that you know have been honored, and have been Women Achievers. So that's October the 6 at the Pasadena Hilton. And basically, I want to encourage everyone to think about Taking Balance classes. It improves strength, balance, coordination, and mobility. And you can have your doctor write a script, or you can join a class that's already running, let me see, USC Verduka Hospital. The class meets Tuesdays and Fridays. Give me a call. I can certainly steer you there. There are classes at Adventist Hospital for Balance. There are also classes at Memorial Hospital. I think you all remember the Live Well Senior Program. If any of you are interested, you should definitely make reservations for the luncheons. And the luncheon reservation number is 409-8091. I think we're almost past that. Friday, August the 18th, are we finished with that? Yes, we are. Unfortunately, did anybody go to the reception for the Hollywood film screening and panel discussion? I had cookies. Let me see what else there is. Unfortunately, there's no date here. Oh, yes, there is. August 23. This is the Women's Impact and Issues. And I think Seda Kajoyan was our, or isn't she our, the lady that represents us?
Commissioner Kajoyan represents the Glendale CSW at ACCW, the Association of California Commissions for Women.
Well, this one is in Sacramento, so I don't think she's going to make it. And the, this is celebrating California women leaders and support. And this is coming up, once again, same thing, in Sacramento. I think we are, no one will be attending that. And then we have Equality Day, August the 26. That would be working to, to have women paid equally to men. And I believe that is also going to be in Sacramento. That's it. Other than that, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the American Way Thrift Store for clothing. I think that we've done a great job with accessories, but the American Way Thrift Shop is in Burbank, and clothing, merchandise, et cetera. And it's a great thrift shop if you're looking for almost anything that you would need. And I really wish you'd talk about this, don't fill the plastic bottles. Come on, I want you to do that, Vice Chair. Well, then you just read it, and just let everybody know.
All right. So refilling your bottle, this is an informative thing for us in the community. Refilling your water bottle is an easy way to save money. Be green, and most importantly, stay healthy and right. So, the answer is wrong. A study by Fred Mill Reviews has found that water bottles harbor huge levels of potentially harmful bacteria. So are you saying we shouldn't be drinking this right now?
That's right. Well, no, it's not.
Okay. In fact, researchers revealed that drinking from the average refillable bottle can be many times worse than licking your dog's toy. Gross. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just repeating what the article says, indicates. So four different types of residual bottle were tested after they were used by athletes for a week, and the results were shocking. So basically, we're saying limit yourself from utilizing water bottles.
That's right. Once you've finished it, don't fill it again and drink. The bacteria in it is, what is it, licking your dog's toy, or something?
That's what it's indicating. Correct.
Okie dokie. I think that this is something that's good.
Now that it's been raised, I just have to ask, what institution and organization conducted the study?
Well, you'd have to just take a peek. There it says right there. It was in the LA Times.
I'm not finding the organization that conducted this study.
Even if it's not, it just, I don't want to lick a dog's toy.
It doesn't indicate the.
It does not, right?
It says LBN Investigators Refilling Water, but it doesn't indicate anything else.
Yeah.
So.
So what are you trying to say?
Nothing. I'm just always looking for references, that's all.
Well, we got references, something about it. Anyway, this is the most important. We own our health of our community. And this huge group were signatories on April the 6. That was directly after the election. And I attended, and the Commission on the Status of Women are part of the list for the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition. And there will be meetings coming up in the fall. And I think that the commission, just in general, would, it would be very beneficial for us to attend these meetings. And I will keep you posted on when they are. So I will leave one for Ms. Powers. And I believe that that is the only thing that we have to know about this, is they're calling it, "We Own Our Own Health." And there, there's a group that's, huge group, that's part of this owning the health of our community. And with that, I guess, Ms. Powers?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question about the, the water bottle.
Oh, good.
What magazine did you clip that from?
This would be the LA Times.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I figured. Now, wait a minute. The dog toy thing, I'm really not happy about. Yeah. This is a number that I thought was a phone number, but it isn't. But that was the LA Times.
Thank you.
It just makes sense, if you really want to think about it. Fill your water bottle if you want.
So.
Ms. Powers?
I'm sorry, I just want to add something. Regarding the Healthier.
Yes.
I have been participating past few years, so I do participate if you are attending. It is very, and I see, we have a lot of city involvement, and a lot of community leaders, and very informative. I also, since we talked about domestic violence, I wanted to indicate that we are running parenting classes, and engaging parents and students about raising awareness about domestic violence, and dating, violence dating, and what it is. And I have, we're going to start the classes in September, and it's going to be eight weeks. All the information, I'll send it to Ms. Powers, and it's going to be on our GUSD website as well. So I teamed up with the police department, and it's very informative. It's about drugs and related things that are relevant to students, also dating, violence dating, and how to prevent all these things. So parents and students are welcome.
And you'll let us know when they are and where they are?
It's going to be at the district office, and, but I will send the dates. We're going to start in September, first week of September.
Perfect. Ms. Powers?
Just wanted to congratulate and thank these two students, Ex officio Petrosian and Rush, for your service. And we did provide plaques for you to thank you for your service, something to maybe hang up in your dorm room, let everyone know how awesome you are. Commissioner Perian, I think, has those underneath the desk, if you wanted to take them out, and perhaps you and Chair Burns can present them, too.
Go ahead.
No, it's all right.
There's two of them.
There's two of them. Well, Vivica Rush, student ex officio with gratitude for your outstanding service to the Commission on the Status of Women, August the, what date is today?
Today's the 21st.
21st. And I believe this probably says the same thing, and we're going to read it. Laina Petrosian, city of Glendale recognizes you as a student ex officio with gratitude for your outstanding service to the Commission on the Status of Women, August 2017. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And if there's no other comments, we can have a motion for adjournment.
Do you like the motion, please?
I'll motion.
I'll motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:41 PM.